For the proposed Pilot Travel Center, Joe Mills, President.
I spoke to Dennis on Commissioner Freiberger's request, and Dennis said that due to the time-sensitive nature of the hearings in Moriarty, that he recommends allowing the presentation today, what you do as the commission have the discretion to table until the next meeting, if you want, and you have that discretion, but his recommendation is to move forward today.
Okay, thank you very much, and just so that I can make the public aware of the discussion that I'm having with council, this morning I was told that Commissioner Freiberger, who wasn't able to be here today, asked that this particular agenda item be tabled. When I discussed the issue with Mr. Mills this morning, he said he would like to continue to be heard today, which he has every right to do so. It just puts me in a position of, I have asked in my absence in the past, and I don't excuse my absences as I should be here, but I have asked my fellow commissioners to table things in my absence, and they did honor that request, and so it's difficult to now be put in a position to be like, "Thank you for doing that for me, but I'm not going to do that for you." So, we do have the option of, if one other commissioner agrees to taking Mr. Freiberger's request to not hear it today, but we do have a recommendation from council, since it is time-sensitive, that we should hear it. Either way, I feel like this needs to, you know, be on another agenda so that Commissioner Freiberger is a part of the conversation. So, I will now ask Commissioner Tapia what her desire is today, and then with her announcement publicly, what she would like to do, then we will decide how we should proceed.
We'll go ahead and listen, since that's what council recommended, and then, like I said, I would like to be honoring to Mr. Freiberger, and if you're willing to come back and do it again, then you're okay.
Yeah, I hope.
You may.
And just for purposes of clarity, the reason that Mr. Wallen recommends that today, because we too respect Mr. Freiberger's request, but due to the dates in which Moriarty may act, it's better to have the comment today to you, in case you wanted to do or make any comment as a commission prior to Moriarty acting, otherwise delay could make it such that you'd be unable to act.
That's a very good point, thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Mills.
And I appreciate that legal opinion, because it echoes our sentiments. First, I, Jim, for the record, my name is Douglas Mills, I reside five crowd state court in Homestead Estates. I'd like first to commend the county for its listening to the action item, the discussion item, relative to recycling and the board. As a longtime recycler, I applaud the county's effort to address this issue and to promote recycling whenever and where possible. Thank you for initiating those programs, and strong proponents of that and frequent visitor to the recycling center in Moriarty.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Tapia, County Manager Ainsley, County Attorney, fellow residents of Torrance County. I appreciate the opportunity to bring before you my grave personal concerns over the proposed Pilot Travel Center located at the intersection of New Mexico 41 and Cannon Road, A110, also known as Carl Cannon Road, and the Fronty Road, which is state-owned, also known as Abrahamus Road. This is immediately adjacent to the I-40 interchange, number 196. I have previously provided you documents describing my concerns over the numerous negative impacts to this residential community in which I live. I hope that you have read these documents, and a request that they be made, as they are the honorably part of the official record. The gossip would want me to believe that this is a steady of Moriarty project, and that Torrance County has no jurisdiction or influence. I strongly disagree. It is true that Homestead Estates is within Torrance County, but since only the narrow county road, A110, separates us from the proposed project, we are a negatively impacted community, and would hope that the evidence and arguments in our letters would prove that fact. Moriarty prepared a tax benefit sheet indicating that the county would reap approximately $30,000 from this project. There is no indication in their file as to how they derive this amount. I have prepared some data analysis that will show the potential negative impact to the Torrance County revenue stream. If you do not go on the public record as being opposed to this project due to its negative impacts on county residents, then maybe this information will change your mind. This data indicates a potential annual loss of $100,000 around the project to only those residential lots within the meetings surrounding Homestead Estates 1 and 2. As you know, if you look at this data, it doesn't take too many homes to add up to a million dollars. All those properties, if you look at my analysis, and you look at the bottom line, regarding one million dollars of impacted residential properties, the result of total tax revenue decrease is estimated at a very reasonable 20 percent drop in value to be that net loss of approximately $100,000. That does not include all the other indirectly impacted properties in Torrance County. I mean, where do you live? Does anybody live off the Sweetwood? Does anybody live behind McCall's on King Ranch Road? All those people, their lifeline to this community, which why incorporated is the valley of living, is through that intersection at Fronty Road. Hundreds of families. Do you not consider that an impact of Torrance County? I don't believe it is. It is our strong belief that the future negative impact upon the same properties will destroy any immediate or long-term source of increased revenue from all these vacant lots. Who in their right mind would buy one and build a home if this project goes through that? Who would want to live on an environmental disaster zone? We don't want to live there. But your support for your decisions may force us into that. Furthermore, this negative impact will also result in decreased revenues from current sources, prominent in your first receives, we call it, pump. All of kids' traffic is off of that Fronty Road. There are other commercial enterprises whose only access is restricted to that Fronty Road. If you don't think it's important that the issues that I have raised should be answered to you by the developer and/or the city of Moriarty, and I guess you're making decisions that's going to cost you in the future. If this doesn't convince you, then concerns over public safety issues created by this project should. This very body approved the location of volunteer fire station and the superior ambulance company within our community, Homestead Estates. How is this going to affect their response to us? I think you need to get that question answered. I think you need to have input into this process. The school district will not only be impacted by a loss of revenue, if you look at my projection, you'll see that detail there, but the cost of lost train protection will increase due, if nothing else, to the high volume of traffic and the high potential of accidents due to the heavy traffic, semi-trucks, RVs, cars. I mean, you're talking about 90 trucks parked there 24 hours a day, 70 cars, 90 trucks diesel spewing out fumes blown into our community. The sheriff's department should be consulted as to the increased potential traffic hazards, criminal activity, and any resultant cost of risks. Who's going to cover that? Is Moriarty complaining for it? Doubtful. I'd like to now go on the record, and with the letter that we'll present to the county for signature receipt, it's addressed to the Torrance County Commission. To protect our due process, legal rights, we hereby request that a written response or responsive be mailed to us at the above address for all findings, determinations, decisions, rulings, votes, results, and legal opinions rendered on any issue raised by us now and in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I'm not finished. Well, thank you, I will. The citizens of this county require this body to act to protect their community. That's one of your charges. I don't need to remind you of that. Stephen spoke quite well on the legalities and the literal interpretations of some of the planning and zoning, things which I obviously personally conversed. I think that he is overlooking the issue of your responsibilities to the community. Finally, and formally requesting that Commissioner Freiberger be recused from any discretion actually invoked on this matter. I have provided documentation regarding Mr. Freiberger's participation in a meeting called by Moriarty Mayor Ted Hart. His reported statement indicates that he discussed access onto the county road, A110, from the project, and did not see too much opposition. These are presidential statements implying that he's speaking from his position as county commissioner. Now, in the past, several commissioners have been accused of violating the Open Meetings Act by simply meeting with constituents, community groups, and having therefore gained information that the other commissioners were not privy to that for its legal's application. So, what's different about this? While I wait your response, thank you for your attention, and we'll stay in for any questions if asked.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mills. I would assume that council is going to discourage any response at this time, since your request is to respond to in writing, and so I think that that would probably be the best course of action, however I stand for a recommendation from council, and also comment from my fellow commissioner.
Doubtful, your recommendation, and then we wanted to make sure that this matter was able to be presented timely, but because you had a very common thing, Commissioner Freiberger, and this was an action item, you've spelled "action requested" on the other half of this time, we recommend that you let us review the letter, and work through the county manager's office to prepare a response, and if you take it up again, if the response is going to come directly from the commission at the next scheduled commission meeting, if it's just a request for documents, then the county manager should accumulate the documents and send them to court, which is what the Public Records Act. But, in any event, our recommendation would be that you accept those comments and direct us to review the record, and you very much should review that letter, and do your thinking.
Okay, thank you, councilor. My other question is, since this is time-sensitive, and I don't know off the top of my head, will we meet again before Moriarty meets?
No. They're meeting on the 18th. They actually have a, when we talk about the Open Meetings Act, they're a prime example of the attempts to do the memo and use suffrage to try to dispose what they're doing. They actually have a town council, city council meeting tonight. The agenda is only available today, so I'm not sure what they're going to discuss, but it's like some of the agendas I've seen from their prior council meetings. It's not specific, there's depending items that they may not want to have discussed. So, I can't answer that, other than the point of the city of Moriarty's planning and zoning board will need to hear a permanent request and various requests for this travel center.
On the 18th.
In direct opposition to non-supply and required documents, retired requested, and they have copies up. So, they're going to proceed. So, if they, if they are proceeding.
And that's the 18th, correct?
That's the 18th.
And then they have a meeting this evening?
Yes, meeting this evening.
Okay. Counselor?
And I know, council also provides them with legal advice, and they might, they may want to, or confirm, they want to express an opinion as to the adequacy of their open meetings act requirements.
We do, we do represent the city of Moriarty, I think that's a matter of public record. However, as far as this proceeding is concerned, the only other statement that I have is that I know Mr. Wallen discussed with Mr. Getchow before he presented his set of documents, these were provided to our office yesterday, and I know that he talked to Mr. Wallen, who leaves an agreement that at this time, it's really a matter that's pending before the city of Moriarty, and Mr. Getchow and Mr. Wallen are in agreement that, as it currently stands, there's nothing for you to do. So, to the extent that aids your questions about the timeliness, or how to proceed as far as scheduling up other things, it certainly affords pleasure to hear things, to make opinions, to give statements of support or non-support, but there is no pending action item before you, and we don't anticipate one being before you, at least until after Moriarty acts. However, you certainly can proceed however we see fit, but I thought that might be helpful to you to know that Mr. Getchow had provided all of this to Mr. Wallen, and talked to him about it at length before today's meeting.
Okay, I thank you for that. My last question then would be, well, maybe a couple of questions. How do we adequately represent our constituents who may have a concern if we do not attend a meeting and speak on their behalf, or be there in support of them without putting ourselves in a position of having to recuse ourselves in the future? And more indirectly, I think this is more, because we all represent all of Torrance County, but Commissioner Tapia, Commissioner Freiberger, this is more in their area. Would you recommend that they not attend the city council meeting this evening? Because if they were to ask, if they were asked a specific question, would their response then have to be, "I am unable to..." Can they give their own opinion, or should they just stay silent, so that we don't just keep tripping over ourselves? We have some kind of plan to go forward without causing more legal problems for ourselves, and still being able to adequately represent the constituents that we serve?
Sure, and I hope that the public and the commission appreciates that in small communities, you have trouble with those lines sometimes, your members of the community, your elected officials. There are political boundary overlaps, and it's been a little bit of a learning experience for everybody, specifically on the recusal issue that I know about, the one that actually went to court, the commission's decision was upheld, and the recusal issues, you know, the commission was expected to have acted correctly in that case, so I'm not aware of any others where it's become a problem. As far as giving private comment, I think that if I were a commissioner, my recommendation to you as commissioner would be that you could attend, but that I wouldn't make comments on your own behalf, or on behalf of the constituents, but I would act unified as a board. If you're going to make a position of support or non-support, I would do it as an official declaration of the board, I wouldn't show up and speak on my own behalf, but I don't think appearing and listening is going to be a problem, I'm not familiar with the specifics of whatever Mr. Freiberger may have said at another meeting, I have to talk to him about that. I ran everything that was presented, and haven't had the opportunity to discuss it with him, so I can't speak to what he's done here, but again, as far as recusal comes up, or excusal, I don't see anything pending to be recused from at this point in time, and so one way to perhaps circumvent it would be for Mr. Wallen, Mr. Getchow to finish their analysis of exactly what, if anything, would ever come before this board, and if nothing would ever come before the board, then the recusal issue sort of disappears, if that makes sense. In other words, if you're never going to vote on anything that has to do with this project, then you could appear in your private citizen capacity and comment. However, I don't believe they've completed that analysis, only he and Dennis, but for the timing, I wouldn't make private comment, but the board certainly could express your support for or against the project at that meeting. Probably the best way to do that would be to send you a letter, or a design name to the county manager along with your letter, or perhaps Mr. Getchow with your letter, you could designate whoever you see fit.
Okay, thank you. I have two comments in the audience, Mr. Crasnio and Steve, if you guys would like to...
I'd like to make a follow-up comment, but I may not share. As to the request for recusal, I believe that I provide both county manager and legal council documentation, not only his, Commissioner Freiberger's statement, but also a follow-up email documenting the fact that the P&amp;Z administrator for the city of Moriarty sent him a copy of those minutes of that meeting, and he had the opportunity to leave, change, modify, or deny his statement. He chose not to do that. So, that is a additional proof that he has done something beyond his scope of his responsibilities.
Madam Chair.
And if he failed to take an action, and the city of Moriarty approves this project, then they're going to start construction. It's going to be too late, and what service have you then provided to the citizens? I stand for questions, and would relinquish the microphone to any other town residents that would like to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I guess, my, the comment to that is that I don't know where he would be recusing himself from, there's nothing pending for him to be voting yes or no on, and so his recusal issue isn't ripe, it's not ripe for debate, because nothing's currently pending for this commission in which he could vote, not even a position of support or non-support, so there is no matter pending for him to consider recusing himself from, was what I was trying to say before.
Okay, thank you. My...
My question, Prasino, stands about the development. Just for the timing, as I did talk to the city, the pilot project's not on the city council's agenda for tonight. It's not on there, and it will never be on the city council's agenda. It is a planning and zoning meeting on the 18th. This is a conditional use permit, and the planning and zoning commission have the authority to grant it or not grant it without it going to the council. So, that's what I just got from the city, so I just wanted to clarify when the meetings were and who speaks. Any questions?
So, just to be clear, it's not on tonight's agenda, and the authority lies within their planning and zoning, so it can go forward with their blessing or denial without...
It could be appealed, but the planning and zoning can make the decision in Moriarty, and that happens on the 18th. There will be, this project is on the 18th, and that's planning and zoning, that's not a council.
Okay, thank you. We have a 18th.
Just to repeat, I'm sorry, Mr. Getchow, for it's kind of late. Just to repeat what I had said earlier, I was planning to be at that meeting anyway to, to be monitored, any questions that our planning and zoning board, and as well as some of my own questions regarding that, and I would be happy to discuss, and the commissioners, there, if there is any certain aspects of this, or any of the documentation that you would like from me to request from the city of Moriarty, that would not be viewed, et cetera, or to pass them, or to, so, traffic analysis.
So, well, there will be a public hearing, just not at this point.
No, they're, they're, the planning and zoning meeting is the 18th, where they will review the application, which you have a copy of, and determine whether they will approve the conditional use permit that they're applying for, and Sheila was explaining to me about this, the city manager, of their Moriarty. After that point, if, if they want to appeal it to the city council, or, you know, playing, their planning and zoning board wishes to push it there, like I'm not really familiar, but it's going to be heard by their town council before the final approval, because, you know, that's not what I understood Sheila was saying.
So, then the residents of Homestead Estates need to be at this meeting on the 18th to voice their reasons?
That would be my suggestion, and I highly, you know, advise them to do that, so that the city of Moriarty knows how they feel, because they may not be residents of the city, but a lot of the purchases that they make are limited to the city limits there. But, you know, as far as jurisdiction goes, and like I said earlier, it's outside of what happens to Carl Cannon Road, which is a zone district neutral strip between the city and the county, until we actually see what's going to happen with Moriarty, we don't, you know, we have no direction under the bill.
So, would it be wise on our part then to have a letter of recommendation, or not, then at that point, just so that they have an idea from the county's perspective of, yes, this is a good idea, or no, this isn't, because of that road, and we, not that we have a say, but that we want to at least pay attention to our constituents and what they're wanting from us?
I think the board finds that it's, the board finding that it's going to express a, that would be the place...
Okay, my next question then would be, since you represent Moriarty as well, if approved by planning and zoning, could construction begin during the appeal process, or whatever? everything halt?
I don't know the answer to that question. I haven't done any work for Moriarty in the last year. And I haven't participated in any way in this project for Moriarty, and so I can't answer that. I can get you an answer very shortly, within an hour to the end of this meeting, I can find that out and report back, but I don't know today.
Madam Chair, Edith, there would be another step, because as you see in their application package, it's just a diagram of, you know, very basic site. They would still have to secure building permits and development permits that had to be approved by both Moriarty Planning and Zoning for the land development and the state construction industries division as far as the building permits themselves. And of course, the various states, if the environment for the state engineer's office, they'll have to approve their plans before they can start construction.
So on the 18th, planning and zoning has their meeting. That board decides yes, no, or they decide they can't make the decision and they're going to push it to city council? Is that their option?
That's, that's my understanding.
Well, there's so many things are going through my head, and I just feel like I learned so many lessons with the shooting range in Valdano, that you just cannot underestimate the impact of our decisions on the people that live adjacent to new construction or new anything. And so it's very, this is, this is very important, because I applaud you, Mr. Mills, for being so proactive, because sometimes when residents are not proactive, the process just keeps going. Now, I'm not saying today how I feel one way or the other, but I do feel that it's very important that everybody know all the facts. And I would caution Steve, I would caution you when you attend the meeting, just in your feedback, you can ask questions, but I certainly wouldn't want you to ever speak, like, on our behalf, because, you know, it's really not our decision right now, but we do always represent our constituents. And so you're on the border, just like those people that were from the gun club, they were on the border, and they didn't have commissioners from the other side there to represent their people. So it can be very difficult, and I think that we need to navigate this as expeditiously as possible in order to represent our constituents and to stay within the framework of the law. And so we'll rely heavily on council to kind of walk us through. We do have your letter, Mr. Mills, and we will await advice from council as to whether or not we should sign that, and how we get it back to you, and how we respond to you in writing. Mr. Getchow?
Yeah, I just want to say that, Madam Chair, that, no, I never do offer any advice as to how you may proceed or not. I just gather information tonight for you guys.
And we thank you.
Over my board.
And I appreciate you wanting to be there today. Is that important? Yes? Sorry, Michael, I would refer to you by your last name, but I put you right every time. Is it Godey or Godey?
Hi, Michael Gaddy. There is a number of options in Albuquerque. You might be perfect for this one, and Smith's put in a, I think the distribution center, they put in a, where they fuel up the trucks, they put in close to a residential section, which actually caused them later a lot of greed and a lot of losses, potential losses, and they tried to make settlements with the residents. I think, as far as I know, that last year successfully, due to the pollution caused in the smell caused by the diesel fuels into the residents' backyards. So another issue that the company needs to consider in the residents is the possibility for degradation of the air they breathe around this facility, because this did come up, it really did come up in Albuquerque, in spite of the environmental impact and all this other stuff. Basically, as I recall, they were sold, well, we don't do measurements of that, or something like that. So it is something that you might want to be proactive about when you go to Moriarty. And I appreciate, you know, the comments you made about, you know, you can ask questions, you just don't make statements. That's a very wise thing to say.
Okay, and then, I should just, I shouldn't even say it, but this is another question, because we live in such a small community, and I know the firm does represent a lot of municipalities. How then, how do you guys walk that line with us and them? And since you're not doing work essentially for Moriarty, but your firm is, would you still, how does the firm operate then, when you have two people, and maybe on different sides, or maybe on the same side? Is that, am I making it bigger than it needs to be, or what are your thoughts?
They don't wipe that decision, like in District Court, they do, I guess. Nobody's talking about the planning and zoning overlap.
From time to time. In this instance, it hasn't gotten to the point where a potential conflict exists, but the possibility for conflict is certainly something that we can discuss with the commission and with the county manager's office. However, the advice I'm giving you today, I believe, is just procedural advice on how you can move forward, not a recommendation on what you ought to do, and so it has no negative effect or any effect on the City of Moriarty. It's just procedural advice as how you could proceed through this meeting and what options you have in front of you, not legal advice as to what you should do or how you should proceed, just what available procedural methods are for you. So in other words, it's almost like the application could be for any other thing, and you're asking me what options lay on the table in front of me, not how should we approach the City of Moriarty and try to stop them or try to help them. You haven't asked for advice specific to this yet, just what can you do to proceed. It's, I believe, we're still okay. Once you reach the point of deciding that you're in opposition, then that's something that would have to be discussed more formally at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. So there are plenty of things for us to consider, and we need to do so. Do you have any closing comments? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, for being here. This is an important issue. Thank you for bearing with us as we navigate what we need to do legally as well. So we will continue to monitor this and be involved in it the best way that we can. Mr. Kushe, do you have a comment?
Yes, my name is David Chek. Comment, I live in Homestead Estates. There are several of us here from Homestead Estates, and we've been treated like the redhead stepchild from Moriarty, because we're just light outside of their jurisdiction. And we would appreciate very much the support and help from our county's mission. We're looking forward to your help to stop this, truck stop from coming in. I think it's going to be a real setback for the city and the county and for our neighborhood. And we certainly appreciate very much the support that you'll offer us in how to stop this project.
Any further comments?
I'm going to make sure, but I'm also a resident of Homestead Estates. But one other issue that hasn't been brought up, and this involves the issue of when governmental entities subsidize free market enterprise. We have a situation here in which the City of Moriarty has, by the documents that you've been writing, is talking about providing water and sewer to pilot truck stop. But the single biggest entity providing grocery receipts taxes to the county of Torrance is Klein's Corners. What is the impact to Klein's Corners by that city subsidized pilot truck stop? And why would the county want to stand and look away when the City of Moriarty is trying to harm Klein's Corners? So I would encourage the county to speak to the city and say, wait a minute, if you're going to be subsidizing a commercial enterprise that's going to harm the single biggest grocery receipts provider to the county, we may get involved.
That's a great point, which also brings me to another question. It was briefly mentioned, and I know that we're not there yet, so these are just all hypotheticals, but somebody did mention the point of annexation. And so that, you know, makes me also wonder, when you support or organize a project, when the plan may already be waiting there to just annex, and then all of that money would then not even go to us anyways, I think that's something that, you know, we should consider. And we may, we may need to have a special meeting or really look at the facts on this, because that was a very good point that you brought up, so. Myra, do you have a comment towards you guys?
Just, again, from a procedural standpoint, what I would recommend, if you were going to move in that direction, is that you place an item on the agenda for either a special meeting or another meeting, depending on your own timetable. And that agenda item would be discussion of the commission position and vote on the commission, any possible vote on the commission position as it relates to the product, the project. So the actual action item would be, the commission is going to express support or non-support, or some other opinion, whatever it may be, at the meeting, so that people know that's the time at which the commission will be making its decisions to whether or not it's for or against the project.
Okay, Myra?
Myra Prasio, Abida. Madam Commissioner, Ms. Pavia, the project does not fall under RITA, therefore, the project can't go around the anti-donation clause in the state of New Mexico, because it's retail sales. Therefore, it falls under the constitution, under normal procedures on how government bodies use public money. So that's separate, so that's back to the council. They have to make that decision on infrastructure. But what, the only thing we could do is offer a resource to the city, and suggested, which they're doing right now, is to have a REMI model done for them. A REMI model is something that Mr. COG does for you, and it's done by a third party. It's different than an economic impact analysis, which the client would have to provide to the city. It shows you the positive and the negative impact of everything in your community, so that they can weigh it. And I would suggest that the county have one done for them as well. That would take in Klein's Corners, it would take in all the different grocery receipts you guys bring into the county, and what this particular facility would do positively for you or negatively for you. And I would suggest that as a resource, it's free to you as a member of COG, which is what the city was, was made available today. And you can have that be done by now if you want it done. So that's my only suggestion.
All right. Could you address how long it takes that the plate says stay?
I, when they asked me, and I might add that there were some things that were, that were not reported properly in those minutes. Myra nor Abida can justify funding. Our only intention is to take whatever the project is and go and see if there is funding available. In this case, there's not, because it's not an economic-based job. So at that particular meeting, when the minutes were done on that date, I forget the exact date, that's when I made the suggestion to the city that they have a REMI analysis, and I understand they're supposed to have it the week of the 18th, so within three to four weeks, so it's about a month. So it would probably take a little bit longer, but if you contact the COG right away, they're doing a lot of the legwork now for the city, it would just be a little bit more to do, you know, the legwork, the multiplier, to attack, all that's different. So it would affect your destiny.
I think that's a wonderful idea, because I was going to ask council how we would direct staff to go forward if we had to have two commissioners agree to direct staff to do anything, so that we could confirm the analysis that was given to us by Mr. Mills, and the same, the analysis that was provided by the City of Moriarty. But if we could have an outside source do it, and they are already doing the work, I would absolutely support requesting that. Would you, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so if we could have, Joy, if you could contact them today and ask them to please, as I said, put the request in on our behalf, I would appreciate it. So I think, why don't we start there? You will request that begin, and then Joy can make contact with us to let us know how that's going. Surely Commissioner Freiberger is going to want to access the videotape of what's happened today, and I, I don't know what the process is there, but I would like for it to be ready as soon as possible, so that he can hear everything that occurred.
I'll have the disc, the audio is available immediately. Now, as far as the video goes, I'm not involved.
Okay, if we could just have the audio forwarded to him, because I think we may have to call for a special meeting, and I want him to be as up to date as he can be. Pat?
I'm speaking as a county resident, but I also want to bring up the point that I don't, I don't believe that it would be appropriate for this body to not make a position statement because of the proximity of the city property to the county property and that county road. That is way within the one-mile interjurisdictional interface, and so it really is, I believe, not only appropriate, but I think it is mandatory in doing our due diligence to take that into consideration and come up with some sort of an opinion.
I would agree. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, well, we have a starting place on this particular issue. Mr. Commissioner Freiberger will get up to date on this. And so we do, I agree, Pat, that we do need to submit an opinion one way or the other, and represent our constituency and the county. And so we have a starting place, and we will monitor this, and we are very aware of the date of the 18th. So we will be diligent in making sure that we're prepared to get there with a statement of how we feel one way or the other.